All right, good evening. It is 5:30, June 6th. We recall the meeting to order and I would like to have Doug Dent come up and offer the invocation.
Thank you, Doug.
Please pray with me. Faithful God, we thank you for the grace and goodness that you show to us on a daily basis. May your face continually shine upon us so that your ways may be known in our communities. We praise you, God. May all the peoples praise you, for then our land will yield its harvest, and you, O Lord, will bless us. Lord, we give you our land, our homes, our work, and our city. Look with favor on this community. Protect our citizens and its leaders, and enrich our land so we may be a blessing to others. We pray that you would be honored and lifted up in our community. This we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doug. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Item number C will look for approval of the agenda. Any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, good evening, council members. We do have one item to add this evening under old business, and that is a conversation about the historic downtown designation.
Okay, that I added under old business. Anything else to come before us this evening? If not, do we have an approval? Do you approve the agenda?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Caroline. Second, thank you, Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion's carried. We do not have any public hearings before us this evening. Item number E, awarding of bids. Brian's going to tackle resolution awarding bid for public improvement 5353, the 2022 Millim Overlay Project.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and good evening. Thursday, May, on Thursday, May 26th, we received, we opened bids for Public Improvement 5353, which is the 2022 Millim Overlay Improvement Project. We received a total of three bids at the time of the opening. Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving submitted, was the apparent little bid, with a base bid amount of $196,376. Mark Lee was also submitted the lowest bids for alternate number one and two for a combined amount of $112,152,000. The engineer's estimate for both the base bid and these alternate works was $325,000. And $325,400. We are lower, as you can see. We bid these alternates based on the varying market that we see, but we would recommend the inclusion of alternate one and two. So, all the work shown on the attached map that's included in your packet can be done this year. So, if we take the construction base contract with the alternates, contingency, and engineering staff time administration, we're estimating the total project cost of $358,528. If you look on the second page, the budget impact, we levy $269,280 for this annual work. If we carry over some of the unspent funds from last year, we will make this project fully funded. And just to let you know, that will be on a consent agenda number seven for carrying those funds forward. So, at this time, I'm requesting a word to construction services contract to Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving for $308,528. I'll go. Any questions you might have?
Thank you, Brian, for the update. Do we have a resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. Krista, do we have any questions for Brian? Hearing none. We'll go roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Heyford.
Yes.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That is approved. F, petitions and communications. Claire, are you hitting this first one off? Bill? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. Before you tonight, you have a resolution requesting setting a public hearing for our next council meeting on June 21st for Lake Region Healthcare. The city acted as the issuer for bonds for Lake Region Healthcare in 2021 in two series. You can see a 2021A, 2021B. And we have Kami here, Kami Patterson, from Lake Region Healthcare. The request is about amending the use of that. So, our bond attorneys want us to have this hearing. Maybe you want to just tell us a little bit about that amended use, and then we'll ask you to set that public hearing for June 21st.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, thank you all this evening. Back in October, we were able to issue about $21 million in debt using the city as the conduits. We appreciate that. We are going, doing very well with the project. It was for an epic EMR implementation, our electronic medical health record, which is really important for our providers and our patients and our community. We feel like we need to expedite the drawdown of those funds to make sure we don't get into any arbitrage calculations or reporting requirements. So, we were asking to be able to use some of those funds to also purchase equipment in addition to the electronic medical health record. And as an organization, we spend anywhere from four to eight million dollars every year on medical equipment. So, we would like to be able to use those funds to also acquire some of that medical equipment during that time period. Are there specific questions?
Thank you for that. Any questions? If not, do we have a resolution to set the public hearing to amend the proceeds for June 21st at 5:30 in the council chambers? Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions in general? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, consent agenda. You have that all before you, and I believe Lynn, thank you, is able to put up on the screen for the folks in the audience. Do we have any? Any other consent we need to review? If not, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that.
Thank you, Brent. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Motion, please. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Yes. That is approved. Item number H, ordinance and resolutions. We have, item number one is a resolution approving the riverfront pavilion rental agreement policy, and Claire is going to give us an update on that.
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor and Council. So, I was before you for committee of the whole last week. We have made most of the requested changes that you had asked for last time, but I just wanted to do a quick overview, and Lynn, you might have to help me click through because I didn't. All right. So, first of all, as you recall, this is to do with our new, beautiful riverfront pavilion structure that we have downtown. First up, the, we had a rental agreement that we worked through and that Rolf's office has also seen. As a reminder, the agreement is between the city and whoever the user will be. A user is identified after they have submitted an application, a $100 deposit, and a $100 daily fee that goes through our recreation manager, Pam Muxfeld. Some users may be required to demonstrate liability insurance for their event. Not all users are required to demonstrate liability insurance. The users that are likely to have to use liability insurance are ones who would have it within a policy already, larger organizations that would be holding events with hundreds of people. And as a significant user, this is just a point that I did not make on Wednesday, and I wanted to just make sure that everyone was clear on this. As a significant user, because they do have dates already blocked off for the foreseeable future, the Fergus Falls Farmer's Market will have its own agreement with the city of Fergus Falls. So, they will have an agreement that is separate from the one that you see before you that will be based on their usage. So, that's the rental agreement. Then, the larger document that you also have seen is the rules and regulations. And just as a reminder, the rules and regulations are referenced by the rental agreement. The rules give information on when to apply, how much time you need for an application, et cetera, the fees that are related to it, priority of use, food and drink policy, max capacity, and things of that nature. As a reminder to everyone, users are expected to leave the pavilion in as good or better condition than it is found. One part of the discussion on Wednesday was whether or not people could affix things to the building, which was something that we had said, no, we would prefer not allowing users to affix tape, sticky items, maybe nails, things like that. So, one of the solutions that we talked about as staff was to add some bolts in some visible places where people could then hang, like if they have a happy birthday banner or something similar, so they could hang items that way instead of having to affix them in any other way. And then, just as a reminder to everyone, beyond the stated rules, users must comply with the laws of the state of Minnesota and with city ordinances. So, I guess, well, Lynn, can you take it back one for me? I don't know if, oh wait, I can do it. Sorry, I guess, before we move on, questions, comments, before we ask for a resolution on that. And I guess I will also address Mr. Kwame's comments from the committee of the whole last week. Included a discussion of number 23 on the rules and regulations. Did you examine that? That's okay. Yep, that's okay. We can pull that up. Which had to do with, the city had a statement in there about being able to restrict the usage toward users who would, who have potentially used buildings inappropriately in the past. We removed that language. The language that I did not remove without attorney consent is number 23, no discrimination. The city does not deny access to the riverfront pavilion on the basis of race, religion, sex, creed, age, sexual orientation, or national origin. That language is included in a lot of our city materials. So, I'm going to leave that up to the city attorney to determine if it is removed or not.
I, if you have a problem with the statement, it can be removed. It's typically allowed or permitted and included in a lot of contracts that we have too. It's just a statement of what's generally believed to be the values of the community. But it's up to you. You can take it out if you want. I think it should be in, but...
When I raised the question, I guess, by means of explanation, this isn't something that we're creating. It's something that exists already, this idea that there's no discrimination. It exists in all kinds of laws and it's everywhere else. And so, on the one hand, it's redundant for us to bother with even putting it in there. And on the other hand, if we did want to say, no, we're not going to rent to you, to anybody, for any reason, then we'd have this in the way. And we may find that there's some group that we would not want to rent to for some reason or no reason. And I think we ought to have that option.
I think you've got to be very careful. You've got to be absolutely careful. Once you open it up to one group, you cannot deny another group. Let's just say that we rented out to the Lutheran church located over at the corner of wherever. Great. Now, another group wants to come in. They're church-based, but not a Lutheran church. You can't deny them. We're a city government. We have no ability to deny individuals the use of city accommodations based upon religion. So, I think it's a slippery slope.
Right.
I think we just got to be careful. I think the statement reflects the values of the community. And if it doesn't, take it out. I don't care. That's just a matter to me, but I think it's important.
I would maybe also point to number one. We do have a sentence here. The city reserves its right to approve or not approve any application for any reason, and to rescind approval and cancel the reservation at any time and for any reason. Does, does that maybe cover concerns?
I think that does.
Okay.
To more specifically answer Rolf's concern, I don't have a problem renting to any Lutheran church or any other church, but if the KKK shows up and they want to rent it, I don't want to rent it to them. And I think we ought to be able to say, sorry, find someplace else. Do it on private property, but you're not doing it here.
As I said, you got to be careful when you base it on inappropriate reasons. I'm not going to argue it. You know, it's one of those things that, it's just, you got to be very careful when you make decisions on who you rent public facilities to and who you don't. And we may all have opinions on, you know, but I mean, if it was the devil worshippers? Yeah, granted, you know, maybe you root on them, but that maybe isn't a reason to deny them.
You don't have to go.
Right.
No, I see what you're saying.
As I said, you do what you want. I mean, if you want to...
I don't think either one of them would have a big crowd in Fergus Falls.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the conversation. I think at the committee of the whole, it also was discussed that obviously this is a, we want it to be a working document. It's not going to be rubber stamped and sealed in etch and stone. It's a document that can come back before us or a future council to make modifications and considerations based upon the uses that we're seeing used down there. So, I think it's important to know that, you know, this is a path to guide us in a user agreement, but it's certainly not end-all, be-all. So, is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that's definitely correct. I think city staff is always open to discussion and answering questions about anyone who might possibly want to be a user. And I think we will do our best to continue to communicate with council in case we think anything needs to change as we get going and start seeing it be used. So, so then, to move the conversation forward, so this one piece is related specifically to the use of the riverfront pavilion. We have also gotten requests from members of the community to dive in a little bit more to food truck usage, because we do have amenities specific to food trucks that are related to, it's one of the downtown riverfront development. So, we do have that scheduled to be a discussion at the next committee of the whole. I think it would be worth our time to review our current food truck ordinance just to make sure that it is still doing what we want it to do. And then also discuss the relationship between food trucks, city utility usage, and city parks at the June 15th committee of the whole. So, we will bring further information to you then. And then, just as a couple reminders, the grand opening of the river market structure, the pavilion and the park, is 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 30th. That is also the celebration of Fergus Falls' 150th birthday. And following that Saturday is the first farmer's market in the new pavilion location. So, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Claire. Looks like we're looking for a resolution approving the riverfront pavilion rental agreement and policies. Do we have somebody that will hand off for that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline, and, yep, I was going to hit him afterwards, but I guess, is that okay? If we roll call this, then, so all in, we'll do a roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 Yes. That is approved. So, we'll go back to the food truck. My understanding is Mr. Conley's here to talk a little bit to the council about that tonight. And as Claire mentioned, we'll have that in our next committee of the whole. But please feel free to come forward and...
Thanks for having me here tonight. Appreciate it. Claire, you did a great job covering everything that was on my list of what I was thinking of. The two questions that came to my mind as you were presenting it, it's great to hear that you're going to be moving forward with discussion regarding food trucks moving forward and dialing in what the, I think the last ordinance was written about eight years ago. About that time. So, making sure that we update with what we've learned. Eight years ago, we had two food trucks in town.
Right.
So, it's a lot different how things have changed. So, my question, two questions I would have. One would be, as you're moving forward with the food truck discussion, how are we including the current vendors, the local operators that I listed, the ones that come to mind for me, Fish Factor, Outstate Brewing has been part of that, Fergus Brewing has had a setup. How are they going to be included in that discussion if we're reaching out to them to make sure that they have shared some things?
Yeah, we've been talking about doing kind of like a meeting where business, so first of all, business owners who surround the area, but then also the food trucks who operate in the area and could use the amenities, just doing kind of like an open meeting for everybody to talk about ideas that they might have for how it would be used or if they've got visions for its use. We don't have anything on the schedule yet, but we wanted to get through these rules and regulations first.
Sure.
Before we started that conversation.
One thing I've heard just in conversation on the street from different businesses, that having that meeting for an opportunity for them to come and hear and have input, what I hear time and time again would be that the, sometimes, reaching out to them on their site, reaching out to them rather than saying, can you come to us? A lot of times, and I know it's hard to do all of that, but finding that balance to just say, hey, this is what we're working on, maybe something that's presented to people so that they have an ongoing feedback rather than, I'll talk to six people tomorrow, and they're going to ask me to repeat what you said, and I'll get it wrong six different times.
Well, we can take what we discuss on next Wednesday then and do like a write-up and share that individually.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, you know, and if you see, if there's someone that's down at Fergus Brewing and, and a food truck is there, maybe showing that to them. So, it's something that they can look at while they're in here at the moment, so to speak. And then, the other question I had that, thinking that I heard you say, user fees of $100. So, the question would be addressing that. We'll have a food truck at the 150th party. Will that be, will each food truck that shows up be part of that user fee? Or will it be a blanket? Or if you go in, I know we've been at some outside of the community where if we go in as an independent business, then you pay a fee. If you go in under the umbrella of an activity, then it's different. So, just clarification on that.
Yes. So, the $100 fee is for whoever is renting the structure pays that fee. And then, whatever event is occurring related to that user, that fee would then cover that. If there's a food, so we've got, which is what we'll need to discuss next committee of the whole, is we also have a separate permitting process for food trucks or vendors to be setting up in city parks already, and that's a separate $15 fee. So, we need to look at all of those different rules that we have going right now and make sure that they are clearly meshing with each other.
Right.
But we haven't had that discussion quite yet.
Perfect. Yeah. And then, I guess, my final question that would come to mind, couldn't have been too important because I lost my thought. So, the communication, just letting people know what's going on, that's the most key. Well, it came to me, so I saw it here earlier. We've been celebrating over the last 10 years how pop-up businesses happen downtown and so on. And that's great. We want to keep seeing that. As we're talking about the food truck discussion, tying that in, because we will see people who, young entrepreneurs coming in saying, I have a pop-up idea that might work good here. And how we, as a community, address that so that it's encouraging the younger generation to do that. At the same time that we may put the brakes on it if someone's fearful of saying, oh, that's getting into our turf. I'm from Dairyland. Do I want someone right in front of my store? No. But if it's on the city park and it's all that, we're going to be inclusive. We want to make sure of that. So, the same thing downtown, that being mindful of the businesses that are down there, but at the same time, not letting the businesses that are down there stifle new opportunities for people coming into town. So, just things to think about.
Thanks for the feedback. We appreciate it. And we'll have, I encourage you, we have committee hall meeting at 7:00 in the morning, if you want to join us, where we have this more thorough discussion on the food truck and help us shape that conversation.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number two, resolution approving a combined preliminary and final plat on the Trosvik Edition. Karen?
Thank you, Your Honor and City Council. Good evening. This request is for a combined preliminary and final plat approval of Trosvik Edition. The subject property is a developed industrial and office park property located at 1806 East Fur Avenue. It's currently one lot. The proposal is for two lots for the purposes of selling one of the lots. A plat is necessary because the subject property was already the result of one split. So, the subdivision approval is now required for this subsequent split. The proposed new common lot line between lots one and two, I think this mouse is working. Nope. There you go, Lynn. Yep, right there. There is a existing building that's running between the new common lot line that's proposed. So, the planning commission at a special meeting on June 1st voted to recommend approval of the combined preliminary and final plat, subject to the condition that the parties enter into a developers' agreement with the city, which would state that the timeline for that building to be removed, it was already the intention of the property owners to demolish this building, and this would just put a timeline on that to ensure that it happens. So, if the council were to vote in favor today of item H2, you would be approving the preliminary and final plat, subject to that condition of the developers' agreement. And item number three is actually that development agreement, which addresses that timeline for removal of that building and has been signed by the, all the partners of the ownership entity. And so, the city, if it would, if the council would approve item three, would basically be authorizing to enter into that developers' agreement. And then, the parties could move forward with signing the plat and getting the city's signatures and going on to record that. So, if there's any questions about either of those two items?
Do we have any questions for Karen? Hearing none. It's my understanding there's somebody in the chambers that this affects and maybe wanted to speak at our meeting tonight. Did you want to address the council, anything? Okay. All right. Do we have a resolution for number two?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That item is approved. Item number three, resolution accepting the Trosvik Edition Development Agreement. Karen already gave us an update on that. Do we have a motion before us on that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That is approved. Item number I, presentation of claims before you. You have $3,318,626.17.
I will offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. We have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Krista. Any other discussion or questions for Bill? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That item is approved. Item J, we do not believe we have any board committee or department reports before us this evening. I do not believe we have, item number K, reports from staff and administrative officers. We'll move to old business and unfinished business. Item number one is the DeLagoon Park Improvement Project, and Guy, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the June 1st committee of the whole meeting, we discussed the DeLagoon renewal project, and it was a desire of the council at that time to fully utilize the $5.2 million that the legislature has approved for putting to the voters in November. So, we've come up with a project that would include the campground master plan implementation, sewer and water utility extensions, baseball lighting, and the main softball complex lighting. And then, that would leave 300, close to $300,000 to build two concessions buildings or remodel the one and build a concessions building for the soccer complex area. What we've left off of this project would be fencing throughout the park area and soccer field lighting, and then Field 5 softball field lighting. But so, all of that could be done for that $5.2 million based on the estimates that we've received from the whole committee. And we do have Kent Luwaji online with us again tonight, if there are any questions. Or Kent, you want to just run through it a little bit from your end too, if you'd like, or?
I certainly can. That was a good recap. So, what we looked at at the beginning was improvements to sewer and water extensions throughout DeLagoon Park, campground improvements that were identified in the master plan in 2014, the lighting improvements the guy just mentioned. Fencing, replacing all the fencing in the site at all the fields, as well as adding fencing around BMX track and archery range. And that 8.7 that we originally talked about also included replacing the concessions, restroom building, softball field, and building a new one at the soccer field. So, at this point, it would be, as Scott suggested, trimmed down to hit that $5.2 million threshold.
Thank you, Kent, for that, and thank you, Guy, for the update. Any, do you want to add anything?
No, I, Your Honor, council members, I was just going to say, if you guys are comfortable with the direction that we're presenting tonight, I think a resolution approving the scope of the project would be warranted, and then we're building a timeline and ballot questions that will come back before you on that timeline. So, this at least gives us the ability to put together what those terms may look like, get a ballot question proposal to bring before you here in the coming months. So, approving the scope, I think, would be a good step for tonight.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have approval, as you had mentioned, a resolution to approve the scope of the project?
I'll offer that.
Oh.
Thank you, Tom, and seconded by Scott. Any questions? Any questions for Guy, Kent, or...
I just had some general comments kind of on the, first of all, thank you to all the staff for all of the hard work you put in on this. I, you know, I was having a conversation with one of my constituents that stopped by my house this last weekend, and, you know, we got to talking about how, it's almost surreal how shorthanded every single employer is, you know, and it leads to, you know, long wait times and just inconveniences that, you know, would have been unheard of, you know, three years ago. And, you know, part of the solution is that we want to, you know, continue to make Fergus Falls a place where people want to come and visit and spend their dollars and come and live and come and work. And, you know, projects like this are things that can set us apart from other communities when people are evaluating where they might want to go and live and where they might want to go and work. So, it's very important for us as a city to keep making these, you know, responsible investments in our future to give, you know, recreational opportunities and give people a reason to want to come here and see, you know, how great the city is, combined with the other great projects that we have going on. I'm just, you know, very appreciative of all the work that's been done with this, and I'm more than happy to support it.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else have any, anything to add? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That is approved. Item number two, Karen's going to give us an update on the historic downtown discussion. Kent, we're good if, it looks like you got to get somewhere, so thanks for your time this evening, and we appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor and City Council.
Just as a reminder, this item was from the last city council meeting. The Heritage Preservation Commission sent a request to city council to authorize staff to prepare an application for a grant through the Minnesota State Historical Preservation Organization. So, it was a second round grant opportunity of SHPO's annual round, and the request was to evaluate the downtown as a potential historic district. So, essentially, it's a three-step process, and the request was to do the second step, which was to see whether or not a historic district was present. And city council requested more information about the historic district process and sort of pros and cons of the designation at the June 1st committee of the whole. The application for that grant would have been due June 3rd, and so, in consultation with the HPC chair, Chris Shulke, just the timeline for turnaround that staff would have had to prepare that application, you know, we wanted to send in something good, and also just to sort of have some time for HPC and other stakeholders to sort of meet and discuss some of the concerns that there might have been, and to be able to make that case for the historic designation was just a little bit of a tight turnaround. You may also recall from the presentation that the program requires a match, and so, this would also give more time for the city to identify the source of a match as well. So, all combined, it seemed like there was just maybe a little bit more time and discussion that was needed for this item, and without sort of that impending deadline of the grant application, it just seemed like we could, you know, discuss that at another time. So, the HPC's next meeting would be in July, I think July 6th, the first Wednesday of the month, and so, we would expect them to sort of discuss that item at their next meeting. So, I don't know that we have a specific date to bring it back to council, but just something that would be at a later meeting. We can certainly answer any questions.
Thank you for the update. It's much appreciated. It's nice to keep it on our radar. So, thank you for giving us an update, and it certainly makes sense with the timeline that we punted that until a future date. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. No new business before us tonight.